The founder Carrie Steele Logan was an emancipated slave who moved to Atlanta during Reconstruction while working as a maid at the Union Railroad Station and encountered many abandoned children. Her compassionate heart and her experience as an orphan compelled her to care for them in her very own home. Carrie raised money to build a larger space and founded what would become the oldest black orphanage in the country, the Carrie Steele Pits Home. Locations have changed, but the commitment to children remains. Her epitaph at Oakland Cemetery reads, "The mother of orphans, she hath done what she could." I'm Atlanta City Councilmember Andrea Boone. The legacy lives.
Zernona Clayton is a civil rights activist who worked alongside Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Clayton moved to Atlanta in 1965 after taking a job with the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. She also traveled with Coretta Scott King during concert tours. She's the first black person to have her own TV show, a corporate executive for Turner Broadcasting for nearly three decades. Clayton is the founder, president, and CEO of the Trumpet Awards Foundation Incorporated, and creator and executive producer of the Trumpet Awards Show, which honors the accomplishments of black Americans. The city of Atlanta honored Clayton with the dedication of a street and park plaza for a lifetime of contributions to humanity. I'm Atlanta City Councilmember Jennifer Ide. The legacy lives.
The Atlanta Police Department saw major change in 1948 when it hired its first black police officers. Soon to come along in its ranks in 1950 was Claude Everett Monday. While responding to a burglary on January 5th, 1961, on Parkway Drive, Officer Monday became the first black officer to be shot and killed in the line of duty. Officer Monday was 39 years old and left behind a wife and five children. He was recently honored with a proclamation during the 60th commemoration of his death. His family was there celebrating his life and his undeniable bravery. I'm Atlanta City Councilmember Michael Julian Bond. The legacy lives.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Matt Westmoreland. I chair the Community Development and Human Services Committee, and I would like to welcome you to this work session on Development Impact Fees. I am joined at the moment by colleagues, councilmembers Carlos Smith, Dustin Hillis, Jennifer Ide, Nadine Archibong, Joyce Shepherd, Howard Shook, and Andre Dickens. Other CMs will be in and out over the course of this conversation. Ms. Pulandini, will you start things off with our remote meeting statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This Development Impact Fees Study Update Work Session hosted by the Community Development Human Services Committee is being conducted remotely as advertised and as in accordance with OCPA 50-14-1. The public may access the meeting by dialing 877-579-6743, conference ID 831-599-1356, which is noted on the work sessions public notice. The public may also view the meeting on Channel 26, the council's homepage at citycouncil atlantaga.gov, the council's B2 channel, or the council's Facebook and Twitter page via @ACCLCouncil. Additionally, the public was able to submit comments related to this work session via voicemail at 404-330-6021 between the hours of 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. the day before this meeting. The work session agenda, presentations, and supplemental materials are made available today on the Atlanta City Council Community Development Human Services Presentation Page. All persons present on the remote council meeting conference bridge are requested to mute their phones and speakers. Additionally, speakers must be acknowledged by the presiding officer prior to speaking. The agenda presentation and supplemental materials have been distributed to councilmembers beforehand. Thank you all in advance for your cooperation.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, before we hear from the department on the study that was done in 2017 and revised in 2020, I wanted to introduce Malloy Peterson, who is the Chair of our Development Impact Fees Advisory Committee, a five-member panel created by council to study these recommendations and provide their own feedback, including three members from the development community. So Ms. Peterson, are you here and would you tell us a little bit about your team's work over the last several months?
Thank you. Okay. Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Westmoreland for the introduction, and thank you to all the councilmembers present on this call for entrusting us with this process and having us on this call with you today. We're pleased to have the opportunity to join the CDHS work session and offer our assistance and guidance as we move to provide the first update to the Impact Fees Study and ordinance since 1993. As Matt mentioned, my name is Malloy Peterson, and I serve as the Chair of the DIFAC. I've been a member of the Atlanta Development Community for almost 20 years. Today, I serve on the executive team of Selig Enterprises, one of the largest owners of property in land in Atlanta and one of the most active developers in the city. Selig Enterprise is a privately owned 100-year-old company with deep civic roots in the Atlanta community. The Development Impact Fees Advisory Committee was assembled in the summer of 2019 to evaluate the City of Atlanta's Development Impact Fees Program from a variety of angles. The committee is comprised of five members, each of whom were appointed by city council or the mayor's office. These members include Rod Teche, SEC, and Chief Development Officer for Wingate Capital Associates, an active developer in Atlanta today; Kevin Green, who's President and CEO of the Midtown Alliance; Jim Brown, owner of homebuilder JWB Properties and past President of the Georgia Home Builders Association; and Stacy McCoy, Director of Finance of SciCom Infrastructure Services. As a matter of context, when our committee was formed just over a year and a half ago, the City of Atlanta's Development Impact Fees have not been updated since 1993. Three years prior to the Cincinnati Olympic Games, which ushered in almost three decades of unprecedented growth in Atlanta from a population, business, and development perspective. For the last 20 months, we've met monthly. In terms of process, we followed the following steps. First, we reviewed the initial purpose of the program and its desired outcomes, along with the program's history. Second, we studied the legal framework of the program to understand the requirements and the restrictions. Then we familiarized ourselves with those, the original legislation from 1993, along with the 2010 and 2017 fee study updates that were drafted but were never adopted. We benchmarked Atlanta's fees against peer group cities for comparative purposes, and we requested and received historic reporting from staff and discussed future reporting and best practices. We examined guidelines and regulations and identified several factors that kept fees from being spent where they were most often needed. We commissioned consultant Duncan and Associates to complete a 2020 fee study update. Then we provided comments and suggested edits to that study, which Duncan turned in as its final draft 2020 fee study. Within that study, it updated fee structures, expanded the scope of the usage of funds for permissible, updated affordable housing and economic language, improved the transparency of reporting, and updated transportation guidelines to align with state mandates of proximity consideration. Finally, after receiving comments from the CDHS committee last month, we held a meeting in January where we took a vote on all the recommendations from CDHS. As you will see in presentations coming up in this meeting, from Tiffany and staff of the six recommendations, five of these passed our committee. The one recommendation that did not pass was related to the speed at which these increases were implemented and assessed. This was recommendation number two, which suggested phasing three increases over two years. Three of the members of our committee voted against the recommended two years, some wanting three years, and others five. We are proud of the work done by the committee over the past 20 months. Committee members from both within the development community and those outside the development community voted to increase fees so that Atlanta's transportation parks and public safety infrastructure can keep pace with the city's tremendous past, current, and future projected growth. Throughout the entire process, the development community has weighed in in support of the increase. However, each group has their own concerns. The most common concern surrounding timing was surrounded the timing of the increases, which tripled the current fees that would increase, and the feeling was that these increases over two years was too fast. Finally, we'd like to thank the city's team who guided us through this process. This included Janity Sittifal, Kimberly Talan, and Tiffany Pope, along with many others, in and out through the process. Finally, thank you for the opportunity to allow us to serve in this advisory capacity to assist and advise you for the adoption of new Development Impact Fees Ordinance. Please let us know if you have any questions throughout this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Malloy, and to you for sharing, and to the other folks on the team for your work over the last 18 or so months. It is very much appreciated, and appreciate that you're sticking around if these folks have questions as the conversation continues. Kelly, next up, we are going to hear from Janity Sittifal, Kimberly Talan, and Tiffany Pope, three folks from our Department of City Planning, who are going to present the PowerPoint that we received yesterday morning, and then again this morning in your email. Commissioner Sittifal, take it away.
Good morning, Chairman Westmoreland and councilmembers. Thank you guys so much for this opportunity to present to you our final recommendations on the Development Impact Fees Update. We started this process over a year ago, as you know, with working with our Development Impact Fees Advisory Committee members and consultant assistants from Duncan Associates, as Malloy has mentioned. But, you know, as usual, with this process, we have seen a delay due to a longer review and approval process by the Department of Community Affairs. We received their approval in December, and we are really pleased to be able to present these final recommendations, the updated ordinance, and the updated fee studies for the second stage. As Malloy mentioned as well, this has definitely been a team effort, and we really appreciate the support and participation and input of the Development Impact Fees Advisory Committee members, and the support of Duncan Associates, many of our departmental partners, and I really would like to thank Jonathan Putrell, Kixxloley, from our law department, while he helped in drafting the ordinance. And of course, our Department's Business Ops Team, Kimberly Talan, and Tiffany Pope. So with that, I'll hand it over to him and Tiffany, and they'll walk you through the presentation that we have for you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Janity. Good morning, everyone. I'm Tiffany Pope, Impact Fees Coordinator with the Department of City Planning. And thank you all for joining us today, and thank you for your support throughout this process. So let's jump right into the agenda. Next slide, please. Today, we will cover the background and provide an overview of the Impact Fees Program. We will discuss the need for an update, as well as the specific categories that are affected by the 2020 Impact Fees Update. We will also cover the results of the Advisory Committee's final recommendations. And lastly, we will provide the next step toward final adoption of the Impact Fees Ordinance. Next slide, please. So what is the purpose of an Impact Fees Program? When there's new development in an area, whether that's residential, commercial, institutional, and so on and so forth, it increases the number of people who will now live, work, or play in that area, inevitably creating a greater demand on public facilities. Facilities such as roads for transportation, recreational facilities, and public safety services as well. And what are impact fees? An impact fee is a one-time fee imposed by local government on new or proposed developments to pay for all or a portion of the cost of providing public services to the new development. Impact fees are essential, not only because they help fund the supply of public facilities to meet the demand created by new developments, but they also help to alleviate some of the financial burden to taxpayers of covering those developmental costs. Impact fees, of course, create an additional stream of revenue for the city. However, the expenditure of impact fees must adhere to several guidelines and restrictions put into place under the Georgia Development Impact Fees Act. In particular, impact fees can only be used on improvements that expand system capacity and cannot be used to maintain current infrastructure. Next slide, please. So why does the city need to update the existing impact fee program? The driving force behind this update is that Atlanta's fees have not changed in over 25 years. Atlanta's Impact Fees Ordinance, as you previously heard, was adopted back in 1993. As you can see from the chart, Atlanta is well below the national average and well below our peers around the nation. Even in relation to nearby jurisdictions such as Roswell, Apparata, and Sandy Springs, our fees just doesn't measure up. So it's not only time to bring Atlanta's Impact Fees Program up to par with its growth, such as our peers have, but it's also time to bring the program into the 21st century. Next slide. So what does the fee level aspect of this update look like? The chart shows illustrates our current single-family rate and where the study recommends setting the new fees. Again, this is in relation to nearby municipalities. As you can see by the study's recommended fee level, fees will increase to better align with our present growth and also bring the city more in line with our local peers. Next slide. The implementation of this update will take a two-phase approach. Phase one consists of updates that will improve transparency and effectiveness of the program, such as updating the fee structure, updating the methodologies used to be able to expand the scope of how funds are used, update the affordable housing and economic development language, as well as update key components to transportation guidelines to, again, comply with the legislative mandate of proximity consideration. Phase two is more of a holistic update and would take more of a comprehensive approach, possibly modernizing all aspects of the program. The Department of Community Affairs, the governing body of the Impact Fees Program, will soon commit an update to the statewide program later this year, and with those revisions possibly taking effect next year. And at that time, we will take a look into initiating phase two of the update. Next slide, please. Let's take a closer look into the phase one update. Phase one of the study and ordinance update targets three main categories. Number one, fee levels. The study updates methodologies used to calculate impact fees based on our current conditions. Number two, policy. Updating collections and expenditure policies to improve the overall administration of the program. And number three, program administration. So this process will take into place updating processes, systems, and structures that are currently in place to more effectively manage the program. And let's drill down into each of those categories to review specific updates. Next slide, please. So again, fee levels are updated in the new study. So as you know, the current ordinance is based on 1993's land use, construction costs, and overall scope. This update will update those land use types to reflect current types used in a city. For example, the study recommends reducing the number of non-residential land use categories. For example, the commercial categories condense it into smaller areas instead of the extensive measures currently in place. Transportation service area is also another area that will be updated. Transportation service area will be reduced from citywide into three smaller service areas, which will align with parks. Currently, fee levels vary by service area, however, this update creates the uniformity of fees throughout the city. Policy. As previously mentioned, in phase one, updates are made to the methodologies used to expand the scope of what improvement can be funded to meet the needs of a growing city. For parks, for example, the park scope would be expanded to include spend for not only land acquisitions as currently allow under the current ordinance, but will also allow for improvements such as jams and multi-trails, picnic facilities, and et cetera. Transportation scope is also expanded to enable inclusion of spend on collector roads and building new sidewalks where permissible under the Development Impact Fees Act, of course. This study also recommends updating the Affordable Housing and Economic Development exemption language. And program administration. Again, this update aims to improve transparency of the program and will expand on annual reporting. It also encourages engagement with the Advisory Committee to, again, evaluate funded projects for any perceived inequities. Next slide, please. As part of the update to improve the program administration, in 2019, council reconstituted the Development Impact Fees Advisory Committee. The committee was reestablished to assist the city with evaluating and updating our current ordinance and to ensure with the update that the city improves transparency of the program, as well as to advise on fee structure and to report on those perceived inequities I previously mentioned. So as Malloy mentioned earlier, the committee does comprise of five members from various backgrounds from the development communities as well as the private sector. And as you can see on the presentation, we have Malloy Peterson, Kevin Green, Jim Brown, Stacy McCoy, and Roger Teche, as Malloy mentioned, and they have been a great support throughout this process. And later in the presentation, we will cover their final recommendations. Next slide, please. As part of the Advisory Committee's role to advise on impact fee policy decisions, they recently met to discuss and vote on recommendations that require finalizing. Those recommendations include the timeline for adopting a new fee study and associated ordinance, the potential phasing end or percentage adoption of recommended fee levels, determine guidelines for grandfathered developments already in progress, select preferred single-family fee structure, develop reporting structure to improve transparency on proximity, and lastly, finalize affordability and economic development language. Next slide. So with that, we'll review each recommendation and offer council an opportunity to ask the committee any questions they may have regarding the committee's stance on each recommendation. So recommendation number one, prefer timeline to implement any fee changes associated with development impact fees. The staff's preliminary recommendation is to implement the updated ordinance six months after adoption, and the Advisory Committee was in favor of this recommendation. So at this time, we would like to open the floor for any feedback or questions that council may have for the committee.
Actually, if, why don't you go ahead and finish the full presentation, and then we can, I'll start working on a list of questions and comments from colleagues.
Okay, perfect. Next slide, please. Recommendation number two, preferred timeframe to phase in 100% of the adopted fee level. The preliminary recommendation was to phase in fees over two years with three increases over that timeframe. That first increase would take effect six months after adoption and will go throughout that first year at 50%. The second year will be 75% of the fee increase, with the third year and beyond at 100%. And the Advisory Committee did not vote in favor of this recommendation and had feedback of their own on recommended time horizon. Next slide, please. This chart shows the phasing end of the fee levels over the committee's recommended time horizon, again, of two years, three years, and five. So as you can see from the chart here, based on the single-family rate structure, those fees will increase year over year based on the recommended time horizons of two years, three years, and five. Next slide, please. Recommendation number three, how should we deal with near-term projects in progress that may be financially impacted by rate changes? The preliminary recommendation states the City of Atlanta will give six months' notice prior to the first fee increase, so there's no need to develop special guidelines since that six-month notice will be given. And this was also voted in favor by the Advisory Committee. Next slide, please. Recommendation number four, prefer single-family rate structure. So in other words, do you recommend rates based on square footage or single-family rates for single-family homes? The prefer recommendation is single-flat rate structure, and this was voted in favor as well by the Advisory Committee. Next slide. Recommendation number five, suggestions to improve transparency of the program. So the preliminary recommendation set forth is for the Department of Finance to furnish the annual reporting by June 30th of each year that depicts fees collected and covered and spent throughout the preceding year, as well as to provide the reports to the Advisory Committee for them to conduct their analysis of any perceived inequities. And finally, for the three service areas for transportation to align with parks, to be able to conduct the distribution analysis for those service areas to better implement that relationship between, again, where fees are collected and where they're spent to adhere to that proximity consideration mandate. Next slide. Recommendation number six, changes to the Affordable Housing Exemption Language. So currently, the preliminary recommendation is to provide a 20% exemption based on the presented guidelines, and also the development must be affordable for at least 20 years. This recommendation was also voted in favor by the Advisory Committee. Next slide. Recommendation six A, should affordable housing exemptions apply to the entire development or just the affordable portion? The preliminary recommendation is for the exemption to apply only to the affordable portion and the Advisory Committee was in favor of this recommendation as well. Next slide. And finally, recommendation six B, changes to the Preliminary Economic Development Exemption Language. Um, so a one-hundred percent exemption is provided for projects um that meet the goals of the Economic Mobility Strategy that um that meets the presented guidelines, excuse me, regarding retention, expansion, or location of a business within the city's south side or west side. Is the preliminary recommendation and the Advisory Committee also voted in favor of this recommendation as well. Next slide. So next step, our target is to adopt the ordinance by March with the following steps remaining. After today's work session, all the feedback received will be considered in the final draft of the ordinance. Um, from there, we will go before CDHS for second read on February twenty-third, um, hopefully with a favorable pass to full council on March first for final adoption. And if the six-month recommendation stands, the ordinance will take effect September first. Thank you all again for your time and we look forward to your feedback.
Thank you very much um to the three of you for your presentation today um and for providing all of the information that will make, I'm sure, for a lively conversation. Colleagues, um, you will send a message um with any questions or comments that you have. I'm happy to start us with a couple, um, or I can pivot. Why don't we start with Mr. Hillis, um, and then we will go from there.
Thank you, Chairperson Westmoren. The uh first question I have is looking over these slides. Um, it was on slide thirteen, uh documenting the phased-in approach. So I know they all go up to from our current fifteen forty-four all the way up to forty-nine fourteen. However, if you look at the three-year and five-year timeframes, that first year, it actually looks like we're getting a decrease in the amount of impact fees that are being paid. Can you uh address that?
Uh, sure, this is Tiffany Cope. Um, so the phase-in approach is looking at more of a percentage increase over these timeframes. Um, for the two-year approach is based on a fifty percent, seventy-five percent, and one hundred percent increase. Whereas the three-year timeframe is twenty percent over each year um throughout that time horizon. And the five-year timeframe accounts for a twenty percent increase each year.
So I'm still not understanding, so if, on the chart, these appear to be like the full rate that you would pay each year. So just looking at that nine-one, twenty-twenty-one section of the chart, what does that, where does that nine-eighty-two and that twelve-twenty-nine come from?
Um, the twelve-twenty-nine. Correct, at that time point, at September first of twenty-twenty-one. Um, on the three-year timeframe, the twelve-twenty-nine is twenty-five percent of the forty-nine fourteen. So that would be the fees assessed at that time.
So then my assumption is correct that we're basically discounting our impact fees for at least one year if we adopt this three-year or five-year timeframe?
Um, well, essentially, yes. Um, basing in the fees, the fees will come in at a lower rate initially um and then gradually climb in increments to get to the one hundred percent of the forty-nine fourteen.
Understood. Um, I'm gonna reserve the remainder of my questions, uh, just to get some clarity on that, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, well, first off, we've been joined by council members Antonio Brown, Marcy Overstreet, and Andrea Boone. Next up in the queue is Councilmember Shook.
Uh, thank you, good morning, everyone. Thanks especially to the Advisory Committee members for doing this, um, you know, hard, important, and, and, you know, thankless work. Um, I need some clarification on as regards um service areas. Um, and I'm looking at your, someone's slide twenty-seven, uh, it's kind of in the back. Um, and it shows parks and transportation service areas. And so, am I correct that what I'm looking at is reflects the current boundaries for the three parks service areas and a proposed set of boundaries for future uh transportation service areas?
Yes, that's correct. So with the update, um, transportation, um, my apologies. So with this update, transportation is recommended to um align with the same three service areas as parks. Um, I would also like to defer this to Clancy Mullins, um, our consultant. Um, Clancy, is there any additional feedback you would like to offer as well?
Uh, okay, I'm unmuted. Uh, the uh, well, the transportation service areas match the current uh park service areas. And that was, we, was the question, what's the uh, what's the rationale for that?
Well, let me ask me a question. Um, wouldn't dividing the city up into three transportation areas abridge state law requiring um a linkage with proximity as the controlling issue?
Right. Right, that, that was, the, 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 the rationale is to, to assist with that. In other words, we, we at least give it down to uh a third of the city, so that helps with the proximity. And then use proximity analysis to, to look within the service area to make sure that the improvements uh have a, a reasonable relationship uh with the area where uh where the growth's occurring.
Well, one problem with boundaries is that if, uh, say you have a project that's on one side of a dividing street, um, then I guess per your model, uh, a transportation fee couldn't be used to provide an improvement on the, on the other side of the street. Is that right?
I, I believe the uh, we could, we could use impact fees from either district to improve a boundary value.
Well, okay, um, just a suggestion, what's wrong with sticking a pin on a map showing a, uh, you know, a proposed project at quarter-fifth and element and concentrically we're falling, radiating out from there and picking up projects that are listed in the CIE?
Well, you know, I mean, you can only do so many projects, so uh, you know, doing the proximity analysis, uh, obviously you're collecting fees. I mean, they, they tend to concentrate in certain areas, but you're not gonna take the, the fee paid by one development uh and use and assign it to a project. You've got a pool of money, you wanna try to ensure that you're not, you know, in, in the big picture, taking a lot of that, most of that money and spending it in areas where there's very little growth. So it's more of a, it's more of a qualitative analysis, whereas if you have, if you have boundaries, then you're able to ensure that at least you get, that there's gonna be that uh, at least that much proximity.
Okay, well, it's basically Sprockets wanted to build their new world headquarters at a certain intersection. Why couldn't a hundred percent of the transportation money go to a project, a needed uh project that was a block away?
Well, I mean, if you had a large enough development that generated enough money, you know, that, and you had a project a block away that was a high-priority project, um, that, that would make sense. But you have to balance not only proximity but also, you know, the, the uh, the impact on level of service. So you don't wanna be spending all the money on low-priority projects just because they happen to be close to a, to a major development.
Right, like, granted, um, um. All right, I would, I thank the chair for indulging me, um, you know, spoiler alert, I will be extremely focused on this issue given my thirty years of uh, kind of um dismal experience in dealing with this, thank you.
Spoiler alert received, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and thank you for the presentation. Uh, I, I do have a few questions that I am in need of clarity on. Um, can, can someone explain to me a little bit more about the twenty percent affordability that was determined and um how that, that twenty percent, who, how did you come up with that number?
Uh, sure, this is Tiffany Cope. Um, so the twenty percent was recommended um to have a realistic and feasible um exemption that we could repay. Um, with the exemptions, of course, we would have to replace those funds. Um, so therefore, we wanted an exemption that we could actually put to use. Um, so we came to the twenty percent, um, the twenty percent threshold.
Okay, so with, with that um ideology around what could be paid back based on this twenty percent exemption, um, how do you justify the economic development exemption where you would exempt the entire project?
Yes, I would defer your um question to Jonathan. Jonathan, are you available?
Hey, good morning, council member, this is Jonathan Futra up in the Law Department. Uh, the hundred percent exemption is a, the policy that's currently um in the uh impact fee ordinance, so that is a carryover uh from that policy. However, the hundred percent exemption, your point is well taken, that is an initial policy recommendation uh given the realities of the replenishment requirement um and could, of course, be revised um given these realities.
Okay, thank you for that, yeah, I, I just wanna, I, I think that, that we need to really look at that um because it just, right now, it doesn't make sense to me. And, you know, in my opinion, I think the value we have uh in the programmatic initiatives of the impact fees to incite more affordable housing development, I think is critical to the sustainability in the city. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I, I think that's something we need to look closer at. Um, my other question is, how does this work in conjunction with the permit fee waiver program we, we've already established within the Office of Planning that is already gonna provide um some relief on the permit fees? And I think the relief with the permit fees and the relief from the impact fees around affordable housing, what does that realistically look like? Is that, 'cause some of the, and I ask that because some of the concern initially when we established the permit fee waiver program was um the law that requires that, what, whatever we provide relief for, that we're able to recoup and pay back. So I, I just wanna make sure that we're considering this from a whole perspective and not just kind of a one-sided perspective.
Absolutely, council member, this is Jonathan as well, and Tiffany, please feel free to jump in as needed. But as we were working through this analysis, um, of course, bringing uh many parties to the table, we did look at the uh permit fee waiver program um as well as the current affordability um requirements, bonuses, if you will, uh in both the fifty-four dash one development ordinance as well as the IZ ordinances that exist. So we tried in proposing uh this twenty percent, that fifteen percent and ten percent affordability, we tried to find a approach that would align uh these various efforts that the city is working on to create a realistic package that could help developers uh as they move their way through the city's system. So absolutely, we looked at program, the permit, we, permit, building permit fee waiver program as well as the IZ program and other affordability bonuses slash requirements in the city.
Okay, okay. And, and let me ask you this question, and Jonathan or Tiffany, uh, whoever um has the capacity to answer it. Um, how are we supporting small business developers that are seeking to develop affordable housing? You know, 'cause I think that um when you look at the grander scale of, you know, um, bigger development organizations coming in and, and building affordable housing, they have more of a capacity to take on a heavier load of impact fees as opposed to more of a small business developer, like I have one in my district um that faced a lot of challenges when, you know, being in a position to have to incur permit fees and impact fees, and it, it really creates barriers for these small business developers that are coming in and wanting uh to take advantage of some of these recommendations that, that have been brought forth through this study that you all have done.
Certainly, council member, I'll defer to the planning staff on, on that question.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, Kim or Janey, are you able to offer um any feedback on the small business aspect?
Hey, guys, we can come back, uh, you guys can do some research and, and give back to me on that. I don't wanna hold up my colleagues and if you, it, it's not a problem. I, I just wanna point some things out for you all to address. Uh, I'll, I'll go to my, my final question. Um, it's a bit of a, a longer question because I, I need to give some background on it. But the City of Atlanta has a program wherein developers can receive credit after the fact for system improvement um, um through the impact fees in which they pay. Um, and these system improvements can come from like transportation corridors. Um, my, my question is, uh, the process for impact fee credits, from the research I've done, you know, speaking with developers and just seeing what's happened in the market has been extremely inefficient. So I, I wanted to find out, um, you know, the, the developers required to pay the impact fees on the front end and then they receive the credits after the project is completed. Um, you know, then you, the city allows them to use those credits for future developments or a lot of times you have developers that sell those credits uh to other developers working in the City of Atlanta. And the market for those credits is not robust. And, and, and when you really look at it, the transfer value of those credits, it generally fluctuates anywhere from seventy to ninety percent of the origi, original uh value if, if they can actually find a buyer that wants to buy those, those impact fee credits. So, you know, the original developer is really unable to realize the value uh during the development cycle, um, especially when, when they're needing that relief for financing and construction. And I believe the City of Atlanta loses out because it's really not benefiting from the discount value of those credits when they're sold on the open market. So I was wondering, has any consideration been given to a, a more preferable approach? You know, looking at this where, you know, that the credits can be offset at the front end instead of on the back end? And it was done before, when I did some research, I found a case where we did it for Piedmont Hospital. And there was legislation put forth in which we allow Piedmont Hospital to take those credits on the front end as opposed to on the back end. And it really served beneficial to their development. So I'm wondering if this is something that has been discussed? And if there's been a recommendation put forth to see how we could create a system that would allow that?
Certainly, Councilmember. I'll speak from the legal side and then let the staff speak from the policy side. I will say from the ordinance structure side, when I arrived at the city, I think your point is well taken that the ordinance and the process for claiming credits was not as organized as it should have been. So we have proposed in the draft ordinance, a new process that would basically outline similar to what happened with Piedmont Hospital, similar to other large developments regarding credits, an agreement structure whereby the developer would come to the city and enter into an agreement. And we have a proposed outline of what that would look like. So to your point about offsetting it earlier or offsetting it later, the hope would be that a more organized structure in the ordinance would make it easier for the developers to understand what they need to do to get these credits. And then, of course, then turn whatever they would like to do with them on the open market would be up to them.
Okay, all right, well, great. Long as it, Jonathan, thank you for that insight. And as long as it's being addressed in the recommendations, I think it's going to be substantial, especially again, as we talk about, you know, small business developers, as we talk to big development happening in the city, especially if the big development is inclusive of affordable housing, being able to maximize on those credits to build out more affordable units could be substantial. For those credits are pretty huge depending on the overall payout of the impact fees and the fact that those system improvements can be justified. So I appreciate that, Jonathan. I have no further questions. If I can just get some clarity on those other questions, that would be incredibly helpful. And Mr. Chair, I'll yield back to you and my colleagues.
Thank you much. Ms. Overstreet.
Thank you, Chair Westmoreland. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. So I really just need some clarity. It's a couple of things that I don't understand, and I want to make sure that that what I'm thinking is probably not right. So what I see when all of the affordable housing exemptions and credits are discussed, what it does is it draws the developers, again, to only the affordable areas in the city, which, again, I think is southwest Atlanta. What are we doing to make sure that these affordable incentives are being spread out throughout the city? Like, what kind of self-defense do we have to make sure that all of the developers are not getting these credits because they're developing on our only affordable areas in the city? Putting affordable homes in order to get, or affordable anything in the only affordable areas in order to get these exemptions that the city's offering from impact fees or any other area? And also, want to know if, and I think you kind of answered this for me for a little bit with the 20% question from Councilmember Brown, where you're saying that the city would actually take up the amount that's refunded to them or they're exempt from, we would actually still put that money in the pot? Did I hear that correct? And, you know, want to make sure, because the problem now with the impact fees is that with less development, you don't get the fees. And I'm finding also, especially in my district, District 11, that even though we're in lumped in that three-pronged impact fee bucket, my actual District 11 has not received any of the impact fees. And we've put in at least $500,000, half a million. And so I'm due a project where we're using impact fee money. And I want to make sure that these pockets, these buckets are filled and dispersed in a way that's equitable for all of the districts. So, you know, if you can answer me how this new impact fee approach addresses those buckets and the dispersment of the districts, that would be great. And I also want to make sure that we are providing affordable homes and impact fees, however, impact fee reimbursement throughout the whole city. If that makes sense.
This is Tiffany Collins in the Department of City Affairs. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but you're very muffled, yeah.
Am I hearing that better?
No. And I heard everyone else fine, so I don't know, maybe just...
I don't know. Hopefully, you can hear me okay. I wanted to address the question around the projects that we would like to support in your council district. Currently, I would suggest that we coordinate work with the department that can implement impact fee projects. We're currently open with our CIE process where we're receiving projects this way. So now is the perfect time to work with Department of Transportation, Park, Public Safety, to identify potential projects that can be put forth that are eligible or potentially eligible for impact fees. So definitely encourage that coordination now so that we could possibly have that on the eligible list for the next CIE. In regard to the affordable areas, I think that is something that we should definitely kind of drill down to and the policies for affordable housing being discussed. So that we get sure that that approach is consistent as much as possible across the city. So we definitely encourage that further conversation and coordination with Office of Housing and City Development and that those policies are driven forward.
Oh, that's better.
However, we do that outreach for no matter big or small developers, we make sure that everyone has the same opportunity.
Okay, but did I hear you correctly when you said that when you are allowing these discounts or exemptions, that the pot is still made whole by the city? Absolutely, that is a requirement by the current state law. So no matter what we exempt or waive, the city still has to fund those exemptions and waivers. And so that is a part of the conversation and the strategy so that we identify those funding sources so that we can actually make sure those programs are successful. Okay, and how do we know that, you know, do you provide that accounting to us? Like in our CDHS presentations, will you going forward? Well, you know, or, you know, Councilmember Westmoreland, I would like to request that we see that in real time as they're doing it. If developers given a credit or an exemption, that we are aware of what the city is doing to make that pot whole and where we stand with that, all three parts. But yeah, so what I'll do then is, and I am going to submit, I do, I am so thankful that we do have a new submission system for the CIE. And I have my list and ready to input. But, you know, throughout these three years, I've definitely requested different projects. And I've run into roadblocks on a number of occasions. And I know that we're due impact fee projects of some sort in District 11. So hopefully, the CIE will address this. And you have answered my question, so thank you. I yield back, Chair.
Thank you much. I inadvertently skipped over Ms. Hyde.
Thank you, Mr. Westmoreland. I don't know, this question may be for you, Mr. Westmoreland, or maybe for the Law Department. I believe this is something that we have on our legislative agenda to ask the state for relief on this issue so that we don't have to pay ourselves back. Does anybody remember if that's true, that that is something we are asking the state to change that?
Councilmember, I know you're, whoever's trying to speak, yeah. I apologize, Chair Westmoreland. This is Jonathan Futro from the Law Department. That was on the legislative packet last year, and we actually got to the Senate Committee. It got out of the Senate and went to the House and died in the House. But we can double check, but I don't believe it's on the legislative agenda for this year. But we can double check.
Okay, that would be great because I think everybody agrees that's a problem that we would like to solve. Other than that, I just want to say thank you to this whole team, to the panel and to the city staff. This has been a lot of work, I know, and I really appreciate all of that. And I also would like, I think it's more of a matter for council to discuss if the states then, because I think the point that Mr. Hillis pointed out of having the first year be less than than the current rates doesn't make much sense. But it's time that we do this. I realized yesterday, I think, that Mr. Westmoreland was in preschool the last time the rates were changed. So I think we should move expeditiously to get new rates in place. So just thank you again.
There you go. All right, we've been joined by Councilmember Michael Gruigan-Bond. I have three questions of my own, and I don't see anyone else who currently would like to be in line. So I will ask them, and if anybody else has more questions or comments, we will definitely do that. All right, so on recommendation number four, preferred single-family home rate structure, flat rate versus per square footage. In the very lengthy impact fee study, it was on our attachment from October of 2020, on page three, it lists option one and option two. Option one is a flat rate for single-family construction, 4914 is the total figure. And then option two is a tiered structure where impact fees are less if you build a home that is 1,500 square feet or below. And then there's a second tier for this kind of right at 4914 for 1,500 to 2,499 square feet. And then if you build a home that's 2,500 square feet or greater, your fee's actually a little higher than 4,900. So can you walk us through how y'all landed at a preliminary recommendation of doing a flat rate as opposed to tiered?
Sure, this is Tiffany Cole. The staff recommended the single flat rate because the tiered option would just be more onerous from an administrative standpoint with very little to gain in revenue. I would also like to offer Clancy Mullins an opportunity to chime in. Clancy, would you say that's a fair assessment, or would you like to offer any additional feedback?
Yeah, that's the, that was a recommendation in the study as well because it is administratively burdensome. You also have the issue of what do you do if somebody enlarges their home? Do you want to charge them if they cross one of these thresholds? So, and the difference is about $500 either way, around the average fee. So a home that's under $1,500, 1,500 square feet pays $500 less. And this is at the 100% rate, which is just hardly enough to make housing affordable. But, I mean, it is something, you know, it's a policy issue. But it also would make administration of the simpler.
Granted, both those points. How, to your point that it's not significantly cheaper, how were these fees, how did we arrive at where we arrived at in the tiered conversation? That does end up being not a whole lot of money in between the three options?
It's basically based on average household size and the data that's available. There's not that much difference based on size between how many people would you have in a unit that's less than 1,500 or greater than 2,500 square feet? This isn't that much difference.
Okay. And then on recommendation number six, one of the pieces of feedback I've heard from folks interested in this topic is that when you make, when you mandate affordability at 20 years, really the only type of project that is going to be eligible for an exemption in this category are going to be programs that qualify for low-income tax rates. Was there any thought given, I know that the urban enterprise program has a 10-year mandate per affordability, was there a conversation about that being the level so that both programs would qualify as opposed to just the 20-year life-size deal?
Councilmember Westmoreland, you're down to the floor.
Hey, Commissioner, I can hear you, but you're real muffled.
Can you hear me better now?
A little bit.
I seem to be having some phone problems because I dropped off unfortunately and had difficulty getting back into the work session. So I'm sorry if I missed any questions that were potentially, that I could have potentially contributed to. And if anybody would like to ask these questions again, I'd be happy to try to respond. But let me just chime in on this one. Yeah, we did the 20-year recommendation, basically having it as the Insecurities zoning program. But there are other programs, as you mentioned, that offer that 10-year affordability mandate like the UZ that you mentioned is lower, Invest Atlanta's New Purchase Fund Program. So, you know, there again, it's a policy issue. We could align it with the, align it with the Insecurities zoning program, or we could align it with the UZ and Invest Atlanta's New Purchase Fund Program.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and would like for us to spend some time thinking about whether that may make sense. I have one more question about 6B and then kind of a broader question about the repayment process. In 6B, when it talks about exemptions around economic development, first of all, it's a 100% exemption that's being proposed as opposed to the 20% around housing. And then second, in the second and third retention expansion location bullet points, especially the third, that means that any project where $10 million is being invested would pay no impact fees at all?
This is Dan, you should have called again. In response to, we recently struggled back with Invest Atlanta on their economic availability strategy because the intent for this exemption is really to align.
Commissioner, could you try to maybe put yourself on speakerphone? Or if you are on speakerphone, take yourself off.
Is this better?
That is perfect.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Great. So the overall intent of the recommendation... So, um, the, the, the overall intent of the, the, the recommendation is really to align our criteria for the economic development exemption with Invest Atlanta's economic mobility strategy. And since these, uh, recommendations were developed, we've learned that their, um, you know, strategy has, has been refined. And so that, um, you know, they, they've, they've are focusing their, their strategy right now more on the south side and the west side, and would really recommend that we, we, we not pursue the, um, second and third bullets and only provide an, an impact fee exemption for the retention, expansion, or location of a business within the city's south side or west side that creates at least fifty or more middle-wage FTEs within that forty thousand to eighty thousand average annual salary. That has also been amended as well. So, we would, we would recommend to, to update the exemption language to reflect, um, the refinements that Invest Atlanta has made to its economic mobility strategy.
Okay. That makes sense to me, but to, to close the loop, the, the third bullet point does currently mean that any, any thing that had a ten million dollar investment?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Yeah, let's, I'm definitely down to revise that. And then my final question is on the repaying as a whole. Can you walk us through how it currently works and then how it would work in the future as projects receive exemptions, either through affordability or through the, what will be revised economic development language? How do we go about, quote unquote, kind of refilling the bucket?
Um, I, I think those are some details that we, 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 we have to, as you know, we have not. Uh, we have the exemption in place currently, and we've never, we've never used it because we've never, um, been able to repay it. And so those are, those are, are, are details that we would have to work through administratively once we determine, you know, what the, what the potential funding sources, um, could be. Um, and we would have to work that through with, 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 with our finance, you know, department to see how, how that would work over time. Um, as you know, we, we currently passed a new housing bond that's going to allocate about fifty million funding for affordable housing, and we have the option to increase that to a hundred million in the future. And in addition to that, we're, we're, we're seeking, uh, enabling legislation from the Georgia General Assembly to, um, allow the city of Atlanta to, to create a, a recurring revenue source for affordable housing. And we're doing work with, with, with Invest Atlanta to determine what those revenue sources could be.
Okay. So, at the moment, there are exemptions that are allowed, um, but they haven't ever been exercised, I guess?
That's correct.
So, projects are, are continuing to have to, to pay all of the, the fee. Okay. Understood.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hillis, we're going to loop back to you, and if anyone else would like a first or second, go, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Westmoreland. Um, circling back around to the previous that brought up, and my colleague brought up some of the other questions I had, and those have been answered. On the trend, um, that Ms. Ives also brought back up, um, no matter what timeframe we adopt these over, I don't anticipate us wanting to give developers a discount, um, that first year. Uh, so I have went back and made a, made a chart, and I would like to send that to someone in planning so that we can update this, uh, update this, this visual, uh, visual graph here, uh, to, uh, show what, what would, what would actually be, you know, what you, a three, a two-year timeline would be a phase-in of thirty-three percent over three years. A, um, three-year would be a phase-in of twenty-five percent over four years, and then a, a four-year would be twenty percent over five. So, I've made that, uh, chart and just wanted to know if I could send that to someone in planning and get this updated? Who could I send that to?
Yes, you can send it to Tiffany Cole.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Um, and if you were, um, um, translate it into your, your fancy chart here and, uh, send it back out, um, to council members, if you would.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hillis. Um, colleagues, any other questions or comments before we, we have two messages for public comment that we'll play in a moment, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. Um, but wanted to give folks an opportunity to ask any other questions or make any other comments that they have.
Uh, um, this is Nat Archibong. I know I should have sent you a text, but, um, this is quicker.
What you got?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not on and off the call, so this may have been covered, but the phase two, which is, um, an update, modernizing all aspects of the program and also the statewide update, is the city participating in those conversations, or how is that phase two going to happen operationally, or specifically, I guess is a better word?
Um, we have spoke with DCA regarding their revisions to the program. Um, they have had to place those conversations on hold, um, just due to issues related to COVID. Um, however, once they recommence their process to update the program, um, and that's shared with us, then at that time, we'll be able to strategize how we plan to update the, um, recommended revisions for phase two.
How are you gathering those, uh, recommendations for what should be discussed around an update? Are you getting impact, I mean, information from developers, from council spurs, me Howard? What is informing your conversation with DCA?
I'm sure. Um, with this current update, we took the approach of conducting surveys with, um, many of the current stakeholders, developers, residential, um, developers as far as residents as well. So, with a phase-two update, um, we will take a look at possibly, um, using that same approach.
Okay. Um, this is now for, to add to that, um, so.
Councilmember Archibong? This is Dan Vitorfo. To add to that, um, we, we've also had some thoughts around, um, um, we, we definitely want the, the, the state revisions and update to kind of drive what, what we do, and we would like, we will work with DCA to have some input into that because there are certain things that we would, we would like to see happen as, um, particularly when it comes to the use of, of, of transportation impact fees for, for other types of projects, for example, transit. Um, so that, we have some ideas already on some, some areas that we'd like to see some updates and some revisions, but we also want to take a, a, a really good, good opportunity to start looking at what's happening, um, in other jurisdictions around impact fees and use some of that information to start, um, uh, crafting a more comprehensive update.
Okay. Uh, that sounds, um, good. I was going to, uh, say to my colleague that I think we would consider, it might be a good idea for, um, whatever those recommended updates are, those conversations with the state, that there be, uh, a conversation with the council, uh, so that there can be an alignment with that direction and any potential input that we might have that would inform and add to that conversation would be great. So, I don't know if that would be periodic update or just letting us know this is what you're planning to say, uh, so that we can, uh, understand the direction that the city's going in, because I do think, uh, that conversation is going to be important, particularly as the definition of a transportation expand to sidewalks, and I'm not just talking about the HD sidewalk that will traditionally be a transportation system. We know our sidewalks, you know, in our neighborhoods and in our commercials are also a transportation system. That's just one thing. I don't know how many other things are out there, but I don't want there to be a lack of opportunity for the council to weigh in, uh, in those conversations, so.
Well, we will, we will, we will continue to coordinate with, with, uh, DCA and will keep you, make a commitment to keep, uh, council updated to ensure that we not only get in, um, um, input from council, but also from our, uh, Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from folks before public comment, our two minutes of public comment?
Chair Westmoreland?
Yes, sir.
This is Jonathan Petrell again from the Law Department. I just wanted to close the loop on, uh, Councilmember Ives' question. The, in the legislative packet this year, the efforts to get rid of the quote-replenishment requirement was not in the packet this year. Um, unfortunately, that has failed two years in a row, um, at, at the Gold Dome, so it was not in the packet for this year.
Uh, but what, um, Jonathan, as I mentioned, what was in, what is in, in our package this year is our, our, um, a proposal to, um, have a recurring, uh, funding source, uh, for, uh, affordable housing exemption.
Yes. Thank you, Janet.
Uh, Thompson, um, Chair, Chair Westmoreland, if we could just get more clarity about what that, you know, where that money, that funding source is coming from, because, you know, that's always our conversation where we are lacking funding sources. So, is that a general fund, um, at least, like what, what is the funding source there?
Yeah. And, go ahead, Commissioner. It's, it's, it's asking the state for permission for us to go find our own local reoccurring stream, not one that would be given to us, but go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes. You're, you're correct in that, and, and as I said, there, there's several options that are being considered. Uh, uh, we're working with, um, Invest Atlanta on, um, you know, looking at several of those options, and, um, and I'm sure, you know, once, once, uh, the conversations, um, uh, develop into recommendations, uh, we'll, we'll be hearing more, uh, from, from those that are working on it.
So, when we start talking about, you know, asking for donors or partnering with, with, with certain, um, groups, they always have a say about which projects and where their money can be spent. So, we have to make sure we, again, put in a sales say so that that money is not earmarked for, you know, certain projects. It goes in the bucket for all of our projects. You know, and we have to make sure that that's a part of the conversation that we're having with these, with this funding, because I can see where those funders will only be interested in funding where they develop, and we can't develop our city like that. So, you know, when we're, when we are, and how do you know, like, so, so do you not accept certain projects if you don't already have the funding in place to cover an exemption? Like, how does that work?
Um, as, as I said previously, we currently have the ability to, uh, uh, allow for exemptions for affordable housing and economic development, but we've never been able to exercise them or use them because we don't have the funding to, um, to replenish that.
Yeah. Okay.
And so that, that is what we're working towards, and we're trying to put in place now new criteria so that when we do have funding sources, we are able to use those exemptions in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Messenberg, will you please play our two, um, items of public comment so we can hear from the community, especially Mr. Howard?
Hello there. My name is Joseph Santoro, um, with the Council for Quality Growth, um, it's a nonprofit trade association, um, representing the development and growth industry. Uh, the council, uh, understands Atlanta's aspirations to update its impact fee structure since it was last changed back in nineteen ninety-three. Our organization recognizes that impact fees need to cover the growth-related capital costs to maintain adequate levels of service for transportation, park, fire, and police facilities. The council appreciates the opportunity to engage with the city of Atlanta since the inception of the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee and looking forward to continuing the dialogue with the Community Development Human Services Committee. And as the committee works on amendments to the impact fee ordinance, we respectfully request that you consider the following recommendations. Uh, regarding implementation, uh, consider a phase-in approach incrementally over a four- to five-year period. Uh, the Council for Quality Growth recommends this phase-in type approach, uh, regarding impact fee increases incrementally over that four- to five-year period after nearly a thirty-year, um, timeframe with no increases. That would reflect a roughly twenty to twenty-five percent increase in impact fees per year. Um, additionally, um, we recommend a great period and grandfather clause. Um, we consider providing a full six-month grace period upon adoption of the impact fee ordinance for residential and commercial developers that have already invested in the city, but do not account for the financial burden of increased impact fee expenses, and consider a grandfather clause for any project that may have been zoned or filed for a permit within the Office of Planning and Zoning, uh, within the prior twelve months or filed for rezoning, uh, before the adoption date of the impact fees, uh, being vested under the city's current impact fee structure. And finally, regarding housing affordability, I'll provide a hundred percent exemption for affordable housing rental and for sale units to match the economic development exemptions. Uh, the council applauds all the efforts done by the city staff as well as the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee, uh, to update the city's impact fees. The Council for Quality Growth continues to stand ready to serve as a resource to the city to incorporate or revise impact fee structures that do not infringe on quality development within the city of Atlanta. Thank you.
Greetings to you, conveners, attendees, and viewers of the Development Impact Fees Advisory Committee Work Session. Ben Howard, senior advocate, public policy advocate, D I F A C, Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee, who knew of its creation in nineteen ninety-four, certainly not those of us in two thousand and six who are meeting at Mount Carmel Baptist Church because citizens' participation was being stifled at NPUR meetings. In the year two thousand and six, at a community restoration meeting hosted by Mount Carmel Baptist Church, citizens voted for the refurbishment of Cabotson Road. There was to be three phases, phase one, two, and three. Phase three is nothing now but an empty promise. By now, Cabotson Road ought to be alive with bean trees, great street lighting, synchronized traffic lights, new sidewalks, and safe streets. Further details about that plan, including its progress and its expenditures, should have been in the annual reports published by Council District Eleven and Council District Twelve each year in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, and continuing on to twenty twenty and beyond. Details about the plans to host have been on the agenda of each neighborhood planning unit or meeting as unfinished business. It's not too late to make a correction. Take fans of the Development Impact Fee Committee to fifteen members, and include among those fifteen members, community-conscious grassroots citizens as full-fledged committee members. Then work towards getting the NPUR nine to include D I F A C on its meeting agendas. As usual, I assure you that any attempt you might make to make any changes to any NPUR agenda will be opposed fiercely by the NPUR nine, Vice Chair Anthony Robinson, Callister Claire, Ricardo Jacobs, Alvin White, Snedel Scott, Allison Hathaway, Sherry Williams, and the NPUR nine cohort and supporters.
All right. Thank you to the folks who decided to call and leave messages. That is a good reminder. Um, I wanted to thank the Council for Quality Growth and the Greater Atlanta Home Builders Association for sending your two letters.
Line unmuted.
Um, with all members of council. Um, all right, everybody, that is, that brings us to the end of our, yes, ma'am.
Councilmember, uh, Westmoreland, I just, I just wanted to, um, assist you, uh, council, and, uh, since the development.
Can you, ma'am, can you, can you do the same thing and either pick someone, speakerphone, or?
Sorry about that. My speakerphone.
There we go.
Speakerphone. Um, the, uh, we received a letter from the, uh, Greater Atlanta Home Builder Association this morning, uh, just prior to the work session, and I'll go ahead and send, um, that along to, uh, Julia as well so that, that those can. Julia as well so that, that those can be considered as part of the comments we received for this work session today.
Sounds great. Thank you much. Colleagues, the shell-ish legislation on this topic was read in as a first read yesterday at CDHS. It will come back to us as a second read on February twenty-third, where we will have a discussion about its content and deliberate on any next steps. So don't ever hesitate to reach out if you have further questions or comments between now and then. Thank you again to the folks on the advisory committee for your service over the last eighteen months, and as always, to the folks in the planning department for your work as well. There are no other comments. We will stand adjourned.
Thank you.